Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to open this New Britain Board of Education regular school board meeting. The date is October 7th, the time is 6:03 PM. Can we all scan for the pledge allegiance, please? Mr. Rivera, can you listen to the pledge, Captain?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards, roll call, please.
Vice President.
Here.
Vice President, Robin Marino.
Here.
Secretary, Vallen Pumail.
Here.
Anthony Kane with a C.
Yo.
Salgo Escavales.
Here.
Anthony Kane with a K.
Here.
Annie Parker.
Here.
Joan Fina.
Here.
Jose Rivera.
Here.
And Tina Santino.
Right here.
Thank you. And now for a moment of meditation. We could all keep the people down south in our thoughts with all the destructive hurricanes that hit and are on their way. The one year eight.
And first.
Thank you. Now I'd like to open up public participation. I don't have anyone on our list. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the board? I see John McNamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. John McNamara, 56 Brighton Street. I'm an alderman from Ward Four. I'm just here to call your attention to two resolutions before the City Council that have come up that are going to committee. One of them has to do with amending the Code of Ordinances to give the council authority over naming school facilities, and all municipal facilities. This matter has been referred in regular order to committee. It would, as far as I can tell, void your current policy on naming school facilities. Needless to say, I'm going to oppose this resolution, and I'll be urging my colleagues on the common council to do the same. And I just want to alert you that on October 22nd, there'll be a hearing and a committee meeting in the council, in council chambers, about, I think it's at 6 o'clock. The second resolution has to do with public bids and contracting for what I can see is maintenance, deferred maintenance, renovations of municipal buildings and facilities that has created a list of 19 businesses to act and do repairs and maintenance of all kinds at your buildings and in municipal buildings. I call this back for reconsideration. There's, we have some real questions about it with regard to the charter and bidding, our bidding procedures under the charter. I think the intent is very good to repair and make city buildings safe in a timely manner, and everybody wants that. But we do have questions about the bidding. I just mentioned that in the city charter, if there is an emergency, if there's an immediate need, the mayor and the city can act to fix a boiler, as was pointed out during this discussion when it came up with the council, or to meet an emergency need. But we just have to, in the interest of wise use of public dollars and the timing of it, which is two years as proposed, with renewables with the same list up to five years. So we want to have a discussion about it before proceeding, amending, or deciding not to support it. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on those two things, and thanks for your time this evening.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Anyone else I'd like to address the board? Anyone else? Okay, with that, we will close public participation and begin reports, starting with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. As has become my tradition, the board has afforded a preview copy of our beautiful district dispatch. I'm going to start calling this a magazine rather than a newsletter, because I think it deserves to be called a magazine. As usual, we take a lot of pride in showing off the really great and wonderful staff we have and the wonderful things that we do here in the district. I want to pay a special thank you personally to the variety of staff members who made nominations for the superintendent's challenge coins since the last time you saw this publication. So, relevant as you've got quick summaries on nine staff members and some students who received these awards. Of course, we want to recognize that we're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, which is on the cover and with a feature article, and lots of other really, really nice things that are going on in our school district. Also getting ready to release our first pep talk podcast featuring Isaiah, who was our student MC at convocation. It was really great to talk to him last week. For the remainder of my time, I'm going to turn it over to our partners from New Britain Recovers, who have a data presentation for us tonight. Welcome. And you can introduce yourself to the board, please.
So I'm Emily Rosenfeld. I work as a drug free communities grant evaluator with the New Britain Level Prevention Council. Omar.
Thank you, Coach.
Okay, so thank you for giving us some time today. We wanted to just share some brief results from our Youth Voices Count survey that we implemented in schools last year. This is a very brief overview with some highlights. The full report with a lot more data is on our website, but some quick background. So we did conduct this survey in the schools last February and March. Students in grades six through 12 did participate in the survey. It asks about youth lifestyles, substance use, mental health, and related risk and protective factors. We were able, thanks to a super partnership with the school district, to implement the survey in 2022 as well. So we're starting to gather some trend data to see how things are changing and how the local prevention council can really work to meet the needs of the students in the district. The survey is completely anonymous. No identifying information is collected, and students are notified in advance, as well as their parents and guardians of the survey, their right to opt out at any time before or during the survey. So quick overview, we had a great response rate. Over 3,000 students in grades six through 12 did complete the survey. Response rates varied, with a high among sixth graders to, it sort of reduces over time amongst high school students, which is not unusual in other districts who do similar surveys. You'll see in the full report that we are able to do subgroup analysis, base on race, ethnicity, gender identity, which offers some really interesting information I would encourage you to take a deeper look into. And then this just has our confidence interval, so you can see here, that's like our margin of error, but we feel really good about the validity and reliability of the data. So a few highlights. We do ask students in this survey, which I should say this survey is based on national and state instruments. It's used in many other districts across the state of Connecticut. We asked students, do you have one adult in your life that you can share with? Because we know that having a trusted adult in a young person's life is a significant protective factor. And you'll see here, between 82 and 86% of students do report that they have a trusted adult, which is fantastic. I've shared this information with members of our youth council, and one thing that we heard from the students is that's great, but that also means that 14 to 17% of our students don't have even one trusted adult in their life. So I think, yeah, we share this information to sort of, you know, give a brief snapshot, but also remind folks that really anyone can be that trusted adult for a child. We also asked, do they feel safe in their community? About three quarters of students said they feel safe in their community, and between 60 and 67% said they felt safe in school. And we asked if, do they know where to get help with a substance use problem or a mental health issue? Just about three quarters do. So that's a lot of the work that we do. The local prevention council is letting families and kids know the resources, that there are a lot of resources available. So we asked about gaming and social media, and I wanted to just share the social media assets and consequences we asked students, because this is a hot topic for teachers and administrators and parents, a lot of concern, rightly so. But I share this because the students demonstrate a lot of insight, I think, and reflection. And you'll see in the results that a third of students say, yes, I haven't had a hard time stopping scrolling. They say, yes, I have seen things or heard things that my parents or guardians would think is inappropriate. They recognize the consequences, but then also, there are some assets. So for example, you'll see about, I have two thirds of the way down on this, somewhere between 56 and 60% of young people say they feel more connected with others as a result of social media. And what we find when we look further at the data is that that's often kids who maybe, you know, feel that they don't quite have their place at school, or they identify as LGBT plus. And online, a social media can be a place where they find their people. So I share this with you to just sort of give a sense of, it's nuanced. There's a lot of challenges, but there are some benefits, in particular for some more vulnerable students. We asked about experiences of bullying, if students have experienced bullying in the schools or at home, and what it looks like. So 11% of students in grades six through 12 did report experiencing bullying in the past month. So, small number, that's great. When we ask about what kind of bullying, you'll see here, it's more sort of the invisible bullying. So when we think about bullying, you know, getting tossed around or thrown in a locker or whatever it is, it's not, they're experiencing, you know, there are rumors, being called names, or feelings of exclusion. So it's harder to intervene in that sort of experience. We also, you'll see in the full report, we asked where bullying takes place. And when I presented this data with the leadership team administrators, they were surprised to see that students reported experiencing bullying in the classroom. And teachers were like, how can that possibly be? But you see that it's this sort of exclusion that students are feeling this way. So thinking about acts of kindness and what meanness looks like in the classrooms. We also asked about mental health. These trends are not what any of us want to see in terms of anxiety and depression. Fortunately, unfortunately, they're not unique to New Britain. We're seeing rates of anxiety and depression have been going up steadily since before COVID, and these numbers are very similar to other communities. So a quarter of students reported feeling panic, fear, anxiety, always or almost always in the past year. And then 26% reported feeling sad or hopeless so much that it stopped them from doing their usual activities for two or more weeks in a row. And then 12 and a half percent reported having considered suicide. So concerning numbers, I know this is not new information, I'm sure, to anyone in this room, but sometimes it helps students to hear that they aren't the only ones, that they're not alone in feeling some of these feelings, and that there are resources to help them. We also asked about thoughts of self-harm and engaging in self-harm behaviors. You'll see here. One thing I think is interesting is that when you look, the green bar is middle school age students, the blue is high school, and then the purple is all ages grade six to 12. There's not a lot of differences we see when it comes to depression and anxiety for grade level. Middle school students are experiencing pretty similar levels of anxiety and depression as older students. So we hope to see these trends sort of slowing down a little bit over time. When we asked students what's stressing them out in their life, the major stressors are academics and post-high school plans. That's what's stressing kids out, followed by their schedule, some friend stuff, home family life. So far and away, academics and what they're going to do after high school are boring kids, and maybe they're spending time thinking about it. We also asked, so our drug free communities grant that the city of New Britain received is a five-year grant with an option to reapply for another five years. It brings in a lot of funding for our programming, and as part of that, we are required to track trends around substance use, in particular alcohol and cannabis. So we asked about past month, past 30-day use and lifetime use. Past month use is a better indicator of regular use. So for example, you might have a student who tried alcohol when they were 14 or 15 and never drank again. What we care about is kids who are using the last month. And you'll see here that cannabis is the most, or marijuana is the most frequently used substance, so just over 8% of high school students reported past month cannabis use. And then baby products, all right, alcohol. Again, not super surprising. What I do think is helpful is sharing this information with students, because this is a, you know, this goes up to 9%. The vast majority, more than 90% of the students in your schools are choosing not to use substances. We really want to emphasize the healthy choices they're making, the positive choices, and normalizing that, so that students aren't thinking, well, everyone's using, you know, you walk in the bathroom and it smells like someone's been vaping or smoking in there. That could be one of the two kids. Not everyone in the school is using these substances. So this data helps us normalize all the great choices that 90% plus of kids are making. I didn't want to share this slide. This looks at the difference between students who identify as female and students who identify as male. What you see here, the blue line is girls, and girls are using all substances at higher rates than boys, other than tobacco, traditional tobacco products. They're vaping more, they're using alcohol more, and they're using cannabis more. And I know personally, I'm surprised to see this data, and I'm always surprised to see it. And so it sort of helps us focus in on what's happening with our girls. We know girls are experiencing depression and anxiety at higher rates, and we see that they're using substances at higher rates. So it helps us focus our efforts a little bit more here. And then this asks about, of the students who do use substances, when did they start? The average age of first use? You'll see here, it's really for substances between age 12 up to 14. So we use this information when we talk to parents and guardians, that you should be having conversations with your kids well before high school. Have conversations early and often, because if you're waiting till, like, your kid's 15 or 16 years old, it's kind of too late. So having that regular form of communication and helping parents think about, you know, how you have these conversations, because it's not, it's not always easy. We also asked about perceived disapproval. So we know, and we always encourage parents, when we talk to parents in the community, that they do matter, and their influence is significant on whether or not their child uses substances. So we asked students, how much do you think your parents would disapprove of you using alcohol or using marijuana? And you'll see here, 87% of your kids said my parents would disapprove. That's great. The higher we get that number, the lower we, the grades of substance use are. It's pretty much exactly the same for marijuana use. Not surprisingly, for peer disapproval, it's a little bit lower, but still, 75% of kids think their peers would disapprove. So it's building that positive culture. And then finally, the perception of harm. We asked students, how much do you think drinking alcohol regularly or using marijuana would cause physical or emotional harm? Alcohol has a perception of harm higher than cannabis, which isn't surprising when you consider that cannabis is the most frequently used substance. And so this graph just shows you the variations, so past month use and perception of harm. So you'll see marijuana is the orange bar. It's the most frequently used, again, only 8%, but has the lowest perception of harm. Whereas we see with prescription drug misuse, very low rates of use, and among the highest in terms of perception of harm, peer disapproval, friend disapproval. That is not a coincidence. We've made a lot, you know, worked really hard on the dangers of prescription drug misuse, and we see that here reflected in the data. And then finally, we added this question this past year, toxic stress indicators. This was also added to national surveys, the CDC's Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and we know, sort of thinking about adverse childhood experiences. So you'll see here, between 7 and 9% of your students, we asked, had they experienced directly seen, heard, or been a victim of violence in their neighborhood, community, or school? 16.6%, that is not a title, literally the same percentage, middle school, high school. 16.6% experienced discrimination in the past year. Around 2% have had problems with housing, and then a little bit more students were worried that their family did not have enough food to eat, or that food would run out. So these are big stressors that young people are experiencing, and it helps us think about, you know, what that whole picture is, what their lives are like. And then finally, we do ask students if they'd like to see the data that we collect. 42%? No, thank you. But we do have students who are really interested. You know, 24% answer, yes, I love data, and as we want to share this data. Right? I love data, they love data. So we do like to share this with students. And then 17% are like, yes, with a little enthusiasm. But what I find when we share this with our youth council members and other students, really are interested, and they think about it, and they see that their peers are reflective. So we definitely encourage students to, you know, to check out our website, full report is there. I know you have a busy agenda, so I don't want to take up any more time, but my information's on here, my email is here, you'll probably get the slides here in some way if anyone has any questions or other ways you'd like to see us with this data. And I want to thank this board issue, because truly, we could not do this without really a super, super relationship, so I really appreciate your support.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Emily?
No, I just don't want to, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And that concludes my report. Thank you. We can now move on to committee reports. Start with the policy.
Okay, so we met. We have two new policies on the consent agenda, Safe School and Title None, and using shipment of Goodwin's language for the H4 now until the rest of it comes down the line for us to address. So hopefully folks are okay with that. We did add it to consent, because the community was comfortable with attorney lawyer's description and language that she provided, so that helped.
Thank you. Curriculum is next.
Yeah, we have basically three items. We put two of them on the consent agenda. One is the adoption of the second step curriculum from Ms. Soler, that she presented. And then the newcomer curriculum from Ms. Sylvia Maya Malina is, was also placed on there. And then we had the third item, which is under, you know, for our preview tonight, which was the, we review an adoption of the Spanish one-course curriculum.
Thank you. Personnel?
We met, and we have a couple of memorandums of understanding that we went over, and then we had a draft description and four position requests that we put on the consent agenda.
Thank you. And finance?
Finance, we approved quite a few contracts and charity donations and purchase orders, most of which are on the consent agenda. We did also review the financial transaction report, which is the new business, as well as we reviewed a possible contract between the district and Daniel Diaz, who started recruitment process to bring new teachers up from Puerto Rico. We decided to not put that on the consent agenda, because we want to hear from Mr. Diaz a possible tonight, because we still have some questions about the program. So hopefully he'll be here to answer these questions.
Thank you. Now moving on to IGC board reports. Does any board member have anything they'd like to share?
Cocaine, I'll be selling it. You sold it after how many years?
Wait a minute.
2008 was the last.
The marching bands also at mid-season, with the break, and they participated in their second competition. They're not a competition band. If there's any band geeks out there, you might know that we have a totally different style in New Britain than anybody else in the Northeast. So we get penalized because we don't fit the same style, but they did score their highest ever this past weekend out in Cheshire, and pulled 1,200 bands and got an excellent reception from the crowd, so boom, wow.
I did want to speak about principal over Mr. Soto at De Loretto. He had a family, I forgot the technical term he used, but it was like an invitation for parents to come out and talk to him and his staff, his vice principal. I was able to attend. I don't know if any parents are watching now or later on, but I would like to say to the parents that I was very disappointed, because including myself, I was, there was only five parents there. So with all the things that you see on social media and opinions, there really doesn't weigh if you're not present in your children's events or even these invitations. So I do want to congratulate the principal and their staff, they're doing great work, and it was a nice experience.
Thank you. I know that the month of Hispanic Heritage is just seen as like, just, I don't know what it's seen as to other people, but it's a lot for me. I love being Puerto Rican, but I love celebrating everyone's Nadiina. And I'm sorry that there wasn't anything formal, at least recognizing from us, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew from me that I have been singing from the mountaintop. Happy Hispanic Heritage to just everybody. If you want some sason or some adobo, stop by my house, you're more than welcome to. I got it, my freeze up, let me up. And I freeze it in cubes, I'm just saying, I'm country girl. So, just letting you know, but I love celebrating, and I just want to make sure that everybody celebrates too. You can go downtown to any one of our different restaurants, or call somebody that knows somebody that's making some pateys, and you can cash in too. The other thing is that we also have a community forum, so I need to answer the question right now. Yes, this community forum is for everybody in the community, everybody, not just families of kids in the school district. This is for everyone who, what we would normally call a stakeholder, but the stakeholder really is everybody in the community. You have an interest in the community, you are a stakeholder, you live here, you, you know, you slay here, you pray here, you come here, you have, it's not just the ones. And that has been the one question that I keep getting. And at the same time that I say, why don't you email the superintendent? I say, wait a minute, but you have kids in the school district, you have grandchildren in the school district. You matter. I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to come in, chime in, and give us an opportunity to be able to hear you, listen to you, and really be able to process that. And please do check in with your kids' schools to be able to know when they're going to be having coffee with the principal. Board member Rivera did mention about De Loretto, which is a phenomenal school. I love him. Let me tell you, so was fun. But they also have done it in the past with Slade, that I used to attend as well, and it was the same thing, where I would report on it. Check in with your kids' school, find out when the principal challenged that principal to be able to have coffee with you. I say coffee, you can have tea, whatever you want. Then be able to just sit down and have those conversations, and how you could be, you know, in more of a collaborative spirit with them. What can we be able to do? That's all. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, I just have one thing on, if you can't get someone over at Tina's house. Damon, is Mr. Pierce back? Yeah, I believe it's, what is it, next week, next Wednesday? A week from this Wednesday, the 6th, what is it? Yeah, the Hispanic Heritage Celebration over at New Bern High School. If you went to the one last year, it's big. It's supposed to be bigger this year. Good luck with that, you're going to be a busy, so it's been hyped up to be several times, right? Now I have to, definitely big, it's time to sneak out of class or something, whatever, we got to do that. But yeah, it's next, thank you, yeah, it is the 60th.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Now we can move on to student reports. I'd like to welcome Jaden and Azim to the board. Maybe you guys can introduce yourselves and then get into your report.
My name is Jaden. My full name is Jaden Quenca. I'm a fellow, obviously a fellow student at New Britain High School, and I, me and Azim, she wants to introduce herself soon, but we want to represent the students well, have that bridge.
Hi, everyone. I am Azim, Maryvee Roland. I am a senior at New Britain High School, and just like Jaden said, we just want to be the voice of change for the students at New Britain High School.
Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to share for your report tonight?
We would like to share some things that we've been discussing since last year. We have
We have this, well, the club is not in yet, it's student council. And we were, we were discussing about durag policies, how we could implement them into the school, how could be allowable to fit them under the Crown Act and how the school blocking that, that the Crown Act is like against student rights. And have some, I want to hear different views on degrading policy because a lot of students are very much against that and so are the teachers. So I'm hoping to build more evidence on that. Me and Azim will gather more information on that detail. And for me, I would like to put in a good word for Mr. Atherton. He is going to be the new.
He is the prospective student council advisor.
And I personally think that he is a perfect advisor for student council due to his strong connection with the students in his classes. From my experience, he has this bright friendly eye, his classroom feels welcoming and safe to add on. He really understands us and the person I want to have as my advisor for student council will be there. And that's all I would like to share right now.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on to new business. Starting with item A, improvements. Can I have a motion to approve amendments from the regular Board of Education meeting on September 3rd, 2024?
I was waiting for him to finish training. I was like, yeah.
Any comments? All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Absentions? And it's a pass. Item B, report personnel transactions. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Second. Opposed? Absentions? And it's a pass. Item C, can I have a motion to accept the enrollment report?
I would just add to the conversation that during this time of year, we typically do see our numbers rise during the fall. I believe I've mentioned once before to the board, but again in further conversations with Mr. Pierce, it's, it's not out of the rumble possibility that New Bern High School reaches two thousand five hundred students this year. So that's substantially strong growth. That does come to fruition and he believes he's seeing a trend that might make that come true.
What was his, he was in high school.
I'm sorry?
The peak, we were in high.
I've just read the number three thousand quite often.
In the early two thousands?
Yeah, so.
Well, it's creeping up there.
As described as the mall of Christmas.
We had more than that.
So that's when I, I was here at that time visiting with an accreditation visit and that was two thousand six. And one of the concerns in the report was that it, it was not possible to get to class on time. So a few of us on the team took, took the task to try to walk from the five hundreds to the top far corner of the three hundreds and it legitimately was not possible to do so in the time allowed. The, the corner near the, the trophy case in the stairwells, it was simply just not possible to move quickly enough, even if you didn't stop at the lab or stop at your locker, it's impossible to get to, move quickly enough to get to class on time.
No, I remember the mob being sometimes really pushing me aside because the mob is so big.
We did extend it, I think, one minute, I think, at that, Mr. Pierce. We, I don't think you were, were you an assistant principal that time or what?
No.
We did add one minute or something after that, I remember.
Yeah, yeah. I wouldn't say three thousand students is a target we should be moving for.
No.
We, we tracked the work, but I remember from my old science room, three eighteen to the freshman academy, when, when the new wing opened and it was a freshman academy, to that office was one quarter of a mile. It's true. So indoors.
It was faster to go out indoors.
Yeah, go around, yeah.
So I mean, this does play into the board's conversations that you've had and will continue to have about the future of our programs and buildings. What is it that you envision for New Bern High School and other high school opportunities in town?
I mean, you read my mind.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Absentions? Passes. Item D, can I have a motion to review and adopt the Spanish one course curriculum?
Motion.
Discussion. Are there any questions for Dr. Maya Malina?
As Mr. Escobal said, this has been reviewed by curriculum committee, it has followed our somewhat new four-step process.
I just want to say I was here for that presentation and it was, I was very impressed with the, with how they presented.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Absentions? Motion passes. Item E, can I have a motion to approve contract between CSCMB and consultant Daniel Diaz to support New Bern schools with the marketing identification improvement process of teachers from Puerto Rico for thirty thousand dollars?
So, second.
Discussion.
Is he present here tonight?
Mr. Diaz is present.
Do we have questions?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nate?
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for inviting me to the meeting.
So any questions that I can answer?
Yes, thank you for being here. Like I shared with, with the board, when this was brought to our attention, I do appreciate this, this offer, right? But I wanted to know a little more. I was one of the people who wanted to know, know a little more about the, the efforts with this proposal and we're all clear, to be clear and transparent, the amount of money, I just want to make sure that it is, there's something concrete, right? So I guess one of the questions I had was if you can give us a little more background to the work you do, how long have you been doing it and how long have you been a consultant, I believe, right? Is that part of the work you do?
Yes, yes.
So my name is Daniel Diaz. I'm actually, I've been a resident of New Haven, Connecticut for forty-five years. I'm actually a product of the bilingual education. Maybe you can tell by the accent. Forty-five years and never got rid of it. I, I worked in the private sector, now I work in the public sector, but I also, on the side, I am a scout, what I call a scout or independent recruiter that supports districts across the country in making sure that they bring teachers, qualified teachers, to their districts. As we all know, there is a shortage nationally of teachers and many of the districts, specifically urban districts, have a large amount of students who are Latino. Latino in some districts is over fifty percent of the population. However, it's become to be very difficult for districts to recruit qualified teachers that are Latino. And in the case of my, my experience is in Puerto Rico. I worked for fifteen years recruiting. I'll give you a little background. In the last three years, I started with, actually, I worked for fifteen years recruiting for Texas, Florida and Connecticut. The last three years, I brought over forty-five teachers to Connecticut, specifically in New Haven and also Hartford through a paso a paso program that they had and they began maybe four years ago. They contacted me after the first year because they needed some support in Puerto Rico with this program. In the last, I would say the last three years, we brought close to twenty teachers to Hartford, Connecticut. I also brought around maybe twenty, twenty-two teachers to New Haven, Connecticut. And I also worked with Winnet County in Atlanta, which we are, we just finished a contract with them. And in the first year, they hired approximately seven teachers. They're now continuing the process. As you know, those districts in the last couple of years, they had a lot of money because it was through ESER and also the ARP. So they were offering huge incentives for teachers to come and work at their districts. That has dwindled down due to the fact that ESER, September thirtieth, a lot of those funds had to be used. Why, why Puerto Rico? Puerto Rico, as we all know, is part of the United States. It's only three hours from Hartford. And Puerto Rico has a large amount of professionals. Not only qualified teachers, but they also offer professionals who are changing to teaching. So I also work with Teach for America. I am a consultant with them because they are bringing individuals who are not certified in Connecticut, but they are actually supporting them in getting that certification so that they can also work in districts in Connecticut, although some participants have decided to go into other states. Puerto Rican teachers, what they do when they come to the U.S., I also follow them through. I have several groups that I work with. WhatsApp is awesome. And I, when they come, for example, into New Haven and Hartford, those are the districts that I'm more familiarized with in, in Connecticut, that I've been working in the last three years. You know, we work with them to make sure that they get housing. It is economic development. I mean, I mean, the sixteen teachers that we hired the first year for Hartford, they all lived in Hartford. All their kids went to Hartford and some of their spouses got jobs in Hartford Public Schools as tutors so they can work as helpers. In New Haven, the same thing has happened. I think two of them purchased houses, they live in New Haven. And so to me, it helps our students because it enriches our students, it enriches the community that they're working at because all their teachers learn from them. This is not about filling the schools with Puerto Rican teachers, right? This is about bringing diversity to a districts or to districts that lack that diversity so that our students become enriched. They enrich the teachers and the teachers enrich the community that they work with. So I, I do believe that there are opportunities still in Puerto Rico. Why also, and the other answer to the question, why Puerto Rico? Everybody knows that New Briton has a very large Puerto Rican community, so does Hartford, so does main city, a lot of the main cities in Connecticut. And the, the teachers that are coming from Puerto Rico, many of them have roots in Connecticut. They have family in Connecticut. I know that you're starting a Spanish one, so it's kind of interesting, before I walked into the meeting, I got a teacher from Puerto Rico who was certified in Connecticut and was working in, in New Haven many years ago and says, I want to go back to Connecticut to work. And he's actually a Spanish teacher for high school. So, and I said, oh, I'm at a meeting in New Briton, maybe they'll call you for an interview. So, and I, I've stayed in contact with a lot of those teachers. Like I said, they, they have great networks in Puerto Rico. I know it's easy to go to Puerto Rico, get in a car, rent a car and just travel and go to the places. But it's establishing those connections, it's establishing the network. And as you know, it is all about who you know and who you work with. I have an MOU with a university, a Catholic university in Ponce. I also have an MOU with UPR and with Ana Jimenez. They have approximately, I would say, several campuses throughout the island. I also visit schools. I, every time I go to Puerto Rico, around six times a year. I have tables promoting the district that I'm working with. The individuals who show interest in New Briton, for example, that's proprietary to New, to, to New Briton, that list is given to New Briton. All those people who are interested, all those candidates, we give them to New Briton. If New Briton doesn't hire, right, then we have to give them opportunities in other, in other locations. It's only fair they want to look for a job. I did a survey recently, around two hundred and seventy candidates that I had throughout the years, just asking them, what do they want when they move to another place? Because they have to lift everything. A lot of them, because, you know, they, they're looking for incentives, a lot of them want pension, a lot of them want good schools for their kids if they have children. Many of them are saying they just want job security. In Puerto Rico, you don't become a permanent employee. You could be ten years in a district and you're not permanent. You could retire sometimes and there's no permanency. So here, you know, first that, good health insurance. What's the age? There is diverse. There is younger, the younger individuals, of course, is tough because they don't have the money to start them someplace else, so that's why incentives become better for them. But then you have the retired teachers, which retire at very early ages and, and they're amazing teachers. But what happened was that in Puerto Rico, their pension was cut in half. And as a result of that, they cannot survive on a pension. So many of them are in their fifties and they just want to come back and teach and hopefully retire in ten, fifteen years at a reasonable age and they can still live, have a quality of life. So that's a little bit about my, I'm sorry I spoke too much, but I just wanted to give you some background on what I did, why I do what I do, because I was enriched by those teachers when I went to school. I had diverse group of teachers from all ethnic backgrounds. They enriched my life, so I believe that by you having a diverse group of teachers will not only enrich the students, it will enrich us all. It will help us all. Thank you.
Any other questions?
My questions are not so much for you, sir. I appreciate all the information, it was very helpful. Mine are more, you mentioned about incentives. You mentioned about when you're at these fairs, so New Briton's material, for lack of a better word, would not be the only material at the table?
No, it will be the only material.
It would be the only material at the table.
Yeah, it will.
Okay, so if you're working with, for us, it's strictly us at the table?
So I, I provided them with a timeline, which of course is certain days are to be determined, but it's the timeline of what I will be doing for New Briton. For example, in November, I'm going to be going, if this goes through, I will be going in November and I have already several appointments with several universities where I'm going to have a table representing New Briton.
They have an open house, I believe. They have an open house, I believe.
Exactly, yeah, they, they do some open houses, some of them, they're just, because they know me, they allow me to have a table. I will be also at the University of Puerto Rico, which they have a major fair in March. And I will, you know, I want to be there. I have an MOU with them, so I don't have to go through the whole process of building an MOU. And then I will be visiting several universities throughout the year. One tomorrow, actually, I will do virtually. I'm going to do a presentation to approximately twenty-five graduate students at a graduate class that are studying pedagogy and I am going to be talking to them about opportunities for work. So in this case, it will be New Briton, the district that I will be representing. I do some work for other districts, but when I go specifically based on my timeline, I represent that district. It is interesting, oh, I'm sorry. It is interesting also just to let you know that I am getting candidates. When, when I recruit for Puerto Rico, because it's been spread around, the word is, is running around that Danny was retired, recruiting, I, I have a candidate, for example, from Chicago who happens to be Puerto Rican, but she read through my, the news that I sent to the university. I have candidates from Florida that call me now. So it's kind of interesting that they are, they're coming from not just Puerto Rico. Virtually are they interviewed sometimes, sometimes they can be in person. But what happens is that many districts, they go there and they stand behind the table, hopefully that they come. And I tell them, if you build it, that doesn't mean they're going to come. You need to go to them. So usually what I do is when they go, if I go with a group from New, New Briton, that, that week, not only will they be maybe at a table. not only will they be maybe at a table, right, with me, providing information, but they will also have candidates to interview. So that it is a time well spent.
Okay. And I guess I'm just curious as to what exactly you're presenting? Are you presenting incentives from the district? Are you, I guess I don't know what's been approved from that aspect either and what that may mean for us.
So a part of the, our increase in educated diversity grant, I've actually been working with the State Department of Education and Dr. Tucker. And we did put in some incentives for housing assistance that we will be talking about, Superintendent, and I will be looking to talk to the mayor about that as well. Because again, I went to a conference at CCSU and they talked about housing insecurity. So that was a part of the work in allowing and asking the state, is it okay for us to use a portion of that increase in educated diversity grant to incentivize for housing assistance?
Okay. Does that include too, because there's another item here about purchasing advertising, is that grant going to cover this $5,000?
All of that is put in the grant, yes.
That is in the grant, okay. And then I noticed there was, as far as staff tour? As far as bringing folks from the New Britain team? I don't know how many that is or whatever. Is that expense covered under this grant too? Okay.
Yes, actually.
Sorry.
So can I add, Ms. Moreno? Everything that is a part of this presentation is actually also a part of our increase in educated diversity plan that we approved last year. And it was underneath the alignment of cultivating connections where it specifically talked about going to Puerto Rico. So again, with working closely with Dr. Tucker and her team, because of the work here in New Britain, and I know Mr. Escobar has shared some data that I should have. They're really on board with us and trying to continue to expand those connections with the State Department of Education.
Right. I think those were some things that the other night, we didn't have some of that info. And I think that this has been helpful.
And I just wanted to add also that my job is not to do this forever. With New Britain, my job is to help you, right? Show you the way and you can take it from there. So at the end, I will provide you with lists of contacts. Because as you know, just like any district, people change jobs. So I have to update those lists. I will provide that. I will also provide, you know, press, press information where you could do the stuff. So next year, you don't need me, it's fine. I am here to help students and to help you build a diverse team of teachers. So next year, you will say, that's what Winnet County did this year. They're like, yeah, we're going to go on our own. I'm like, perfect. And I had a couple of candidates, even though I was not working with them, that were interested in Atlanta. I'd rather have a teacher go to Atlanta and enrich students than come to Connecticut wanting to be in Atlanta. So we have teachers that call us all the time. I want to be here, I want to be there. That's fine, just go there, that's no problem. So my job is to build that for you and then you can take it from there.
Well, interesting, you mentioned like Chicago and Florida. There's other connections, not just Puerto Rico.
Exactly, exactly.
Hey, Mr. Kane. To be safe and coming tonight, I was the one who originally opposed Dr. Sanders because I worked at Hartford. In fact, you guys placed three teachers in my building over the last three years. Nine, you featured in the articles that you submitted for the packet. You featured two of them. Of those three, only one is left. One of the three took a day off, said, "I have to take tomorrow off for a doctor appointment" in November of that year. We're still waiting for them to come back for that doctor appointment. I was assigned a mentor, all three of them. And the biggest issue we heard, I heard from them, all three, those first couple of weeks, is how different the education culture is in Puerto Rico versus Connecticut.
Yes.
How the students act, how the parents act, how the administration act. And it was a major culture shock that they felt they were not prepared for. In fact, one of them even mentioned to me by name, that they felt they were not prepared. What are, now, hearing that and now that you've been doing this program, two years out, what would you do differently with that grant than you have in Hartford, those schools? Your parent, your recruits, for the difference in the education system in mainland versus Puerto Rico?
Okay. So out of the 16 teachers that we hired for Hartford the first year, that would say, out of the ordinary year, to be honest with you, it was a large amount, but it was because that was the first year that in Puerto Rico, they cut the pension. And everybody wanted to leave the island, specifically retired teachers, right? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Out of the 16 teachers, two of them did leave. So that's about 90 something percent, which I'm very proud of. Because I do know, working in education myself, you get a lot, there is a lot of movement every year. So yes, we did have two teachers from Hartford. We also had two teachers from New Haven out of the 20 that did leave. One of them left in November. You're absolutely correct. I did talk to him about it because I was a bit frustrated. He had come from a private school environment, if I'm correct about that one in particular. And it was tough for him to, for the teacher, I'm sorry, to adapt to an environment here in Connecticut. So yes, I think my advice, what we've learned along the way is that districts need to do onboarding and also work with the teachers. So if you're hiring a teacher for September, start earlier on and do an onboarding, helping them to adapt. Because once again, they're going to come to enrich our students, but we also have to enrich them. And they're two completely different systems. Just as if you have a teacher from New York coming here, they're different. We are one nation, but we are very different in our regionalisms. And even within Connecticut, sometimes you see a difference between Hartford, New Britain, and Westport, specifically funding wise, right? So, so we have to work with it. That's one of the things, I absolutely agree with you, that we need to work the district. I'm a scout. I get you the names. I provide you with the names of qualified individuals. Once the district interviews and hires them, I do follow through them in helping them and saying to them, "Okay, connect here for housing, do this." But when it comes to the corporate culture of the district, that falls on the hands of the Human Resources Department. They need to do the onboarding. It's extremely important to do that. Just getting their license is different here. Just applying for health insurance is different here than it's over there because they have a more socialized medicine. So it's helping them because we know they're going to help us. But out of those 14, they're still there. We hire, so that I can always, we hired around four, five teachers two, a year ago. Sadly enough, two of them left, but it wasn't because they wanted to leave. It's because Hartford went last year, as we all know, through a layoff period. And there were the last two that were hired because of union contract. They actually ended up getting a job right away in Manchester. And one of them went to Springfield, Mass. Actually, she was living in New Britain. And the, it wasn't their fault, they just had to be laid off. And that was a fact of life. And that's one thing that I also explain to them, that also you have permanency, that you are the bottom when it comes to seniority. If something happens, you could be the first one. And those are things that have to be explained to them because, you know, they're crossing 1,500 miles to get here. We need to be, you know, empathetic, we need to have empathy to that and explain it to them in the boarding process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members have questions?
So the expectation be, and I just want to be completely transparent with you. I'm quite familiar with all of the universities that you listed here on a personal level. And I especially like the Católica just because it's across the street from the museum that I hold the brochure to. Which, and I did wait until after they rebuilt, just letting you know. So the reason why I'm asking you, I'm just curious. I'm a parent advocate, I especially meet kids. What areas of teaching are you looking for? I mean, I'm always looking for more spec ed teachers, but I don't think anybody wakes up in the morning, holds up a sign and says, "I'm the one you're looking for."
Well, that lays on the district. The district will tell us what areas they're looking for. I am glad you're a parent. I, many of people who know me, I am also a parent engaged, I'm a parent advocate. That's what my job is during the day. I do this, my job as a consultant, I work after hours on the weekends and on holidays, anytime I have free. But I am a parenting advocate. So I understand what you're talking about and the need of having. Yes, whatever the district tell me, they say they have five openings. They might have an opening in Spanish. Then I will, when I send the information to the Catholic University, we'll do a flyer, which I will help you put together. And that will go to the university. When we do the radio presentation, we'll say, "We're looking for teachers in bilingual education, in math, in English as a second language, special education." So that way, when people apply. Also, what's happening, and I know that you have a program that is very similar to the ARC, which you actually help students or individuals who are interested in teaching. So we have a lot of math majors, a lot of science major, that might be interested in being teachers, right? So those can be hired and then put through the program, which is a alternate route to certification, but I know it's called
The apprenticeship.
The apprenticeship program. So those you have, individuals who might be interested in also coming here, which is very similar to TFA, but I think your program is a bit more, a bit stronger than that program. So, so yeah, special education if they are, I mean, that's, that's across the board. That's one of the top areas where school districts are looking for, special education. But science also.
Science as well, absolutely. And I do see the differences even when I go back home, because I do, to me, that's home. When I go back home, I do see, and I'm saying, because I always joke around about breaking bread and I really do go break bread with people and bring bread back. So I look at the fact that when you are down there as a consultant, I may have met you at a table rocking Chicago. Just put that out there, I'm not saying that that's what you would be rocking. But they advertise a lot because they put a lot of money. And I'm pretty sure you've seen them walking into a photo, walking into Mr. Special. You would have seen them right there.
Yeah.
Okay. So when you're there advertising for New Britain, but I would have seen you right in Chicago two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Not saying that would have been the timeline, just using it as an example. How do we know that the person that you are then speaking to really is going to be, wait a minute, you know, like, hold on, I got to switch hats. I changed my sweatshirt. Now it says Kane's on the front. And now I can speak to you about New Britain. I can no longer speak to you about Chicago. What about if that's an example of what?
So TFA, for example, TFA, I'll give you an example. TFA is looking only for juniors and seniors. So there is no competition with TFA here, right? The other district that I'm currently working with was Hartford. Hartford wanted five teachers. I actually just sent them two teachers because I don't have any contract with anybody else at this point. This year, I'm just kind of taking it easy because I have an ill mom who's getting older, so I'm trying to work with her as well. So no, most people, like I said, if a person comes to me, right, and says to me, "I want to work in New Britain," right? I'm not going to tell the person, "Work for Chicago," because they told me they want to work for New Britain. I, as I said, I don't want a teacher who comes to New Britain, but wants to be in Atlanta. I'm not working with Atlanta. So this year, this is the people that I'm going to be working with, so I'll be open with you. TFA, I'm working with TFA. I'm working with Hartford on a very small amount of teachers that they want. I think they want, I think less than five teachers, she told me. And you will be the main person that I will be recruiting for. This year, and I'm not taking any more contracts, as I said, because I have to, I have to, I have a lot of things and I also run an nonprofit organization, so.
And you still currently teach?
No, I'm not a teacher. My dream was to become a teacher. I come from the private sector. I wanted to be a math teacher.
I want to get out there. I have a lot of prayers.
I was, I actually took the praxis one and the praxis two. I passed it for math. But then I was hired by a district to work as a parent advocate and I became a parent engagement. I'm also the McInvento liaison. I've talked about the importance of supporting homeless students. So I know districts very well. I know the components of district. I know what districts are looking for. So that's why when I send candidates to a district, I send candidates who want to be there and candidates who are qualified to do the job. But once again, you might have one or two candidates. Let's be honest, it happens, you know? And it happens with people we hire on a year-to-year basis. They work for two or three years and they leave. That is a fact of life and it's a fact of recruitment. But I asked them, and in the case of what the gentleman mentioned, you know, I was pretty upset. I kind of blackballed that person. I sent it to all the recruiters and I sent the name and I said, "Absolutely not. I don't recommend this person for any other place because they left my kids." Being Hartford, being New, they're my kids. And I told them, they left them behind in November. And that's absolutely unacceptable. So and he's called me to get another job and I said, "No, no." And I told all the recruiters that I know, "Absolutely not." I think somebody had a hand on the right side.
Yeah. And I just, I don't have a question. I just had to say that I'm looking at your package you put together and I just want to say, I like it. And I like the fact that you have a timeline and you're telling me everything that you want to do. So I'm satisfied with what I've seen.
And like I said, the timeline changes sometimes because some of the universities have not stated when they're going to have the fairs. We know there's going to be a fair in March. In November, I had put to do a familiarization tour with New Britain. And of course, you're welcome. I already have several universities that I'm going to be visiting during that time. I have a presentation tomorrow. Tomorrow, I'm presenting as a recruiter. These are opportunities. This is what you need, assistance. As of now, I'm not stating the town or the city that I'm working with. I'm just presenting them. And then, I mean, there's around, they told me between 25 and 30 people. So I'm kind of excited about tomorrow's presentation. I already made a presentation also to the University of Puerto Rico, Ponce, which is very close to Catholic University.
Mary.
I did a presentation to around 26 students. Why do I do those presentations? Because they're the future. And these are all pedagogy students who are juniors and seniors. So now we're building the idea, hey, you can travel to the U.S. You can teach in Connecticut. So that's why many people, when they recruit in universities, they don't do a lot of recruitment because these are students, right? But you're building an audience for the future. And those are the ones that now are calling me. I just had two students who just called me. They're now one year into teaching and they're like, "We want to come to Connecticut because we have family in Connecticut." So that's building audiences for the future. And that's what I said, "I'll do this for you this year and next year you'll take it from there." And now you have an established pathway to continue your recruitment. The familiarization tour will be for the one or two staff members to go with me to the universities. I will introduce them to the people that I work with so that they could be a familiarization. "Oh, when they pick up the phone, I need an English teacher. Can you post that in the future?" "Hey, you know, I remember Ms. Sanders." You know? So, you know, Dr. Velazquez, I remember them, you know? Let's, let's, you know, I had a meeting with them. So that's what I'm saying, to build relationships. It's all about relationships. And you know, you need to build those relationships to have continuity in the work that you do and to build that reputation, so. And I want to do that for you, if you allow me to.
Mr. Diaz, thank you so much for coming to speak.
You're welcome.
We had a lot of questions. Thank you so much for coming all the way up here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When I say happy Hispanic month.
We're such an intimidating crowd.
I know.
Yeah, that's.
Great. Just ask the district, she, a question. Just wondering, how many teachers are looking to possibly get this year?
How many teachers would we recruit this year?
Our focus, as we said today, was with special education. So depending on our vacancies, and the biggest part that we talked about is because we have our apprenticeship program. And they're going to have Port 8 Math certification as well as special And they're going to have for a math certification as well as special education services. Again, because we are part of the apprenticeship, that's also a part of the grow your own piece that I talked about last week, that I really like to focus on, because at least that'll give them the 10, 18 months, or that 10 months with that mentor teacher, where they're actually learning how to grow and be a teacher here in the district. And, and Mr. Kane, what happens is they do have a mentor underneath the apprenticeship model, and again, one of the things that we talked about today is, how do we continue those wraparound services? So if we do hire someone, the idea is we're going to start mentorship immediately, and that's also written in the IED grant, where it has to be lucrative to be an extremely good mentor, and there are things we're going to follow, the apprenticeship model as well, where the mentor has to meet a particular criteria to make sure that that happens.
Are they being team certified to be a mentor?
Certified?
Team certified.
Yes, but there's a criteria that we can use that's more extensive than team mentorship that we use for the apprenticeship model.
You know, are you compensated for being a mentor?
They will be compensated well.
How much?
So, what we wrote in the grant, I think was about $2,000.
We're here.
Yes. Ready?
Yeah.
Ms. Edwards, can you do a real call vote for this, please?
Senator President Joseph Castro?
Yes.
Ms. Barbara Moreno?
Yes.
Ms. Diana Reyes?
Yes.
Anthony Kane with the C?
Yes.
Salvador Estabales?
Absolutely.
Anthony Kane with the K?
Yes.
Ms. Ann Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Joaquin?
Yes.
Mr. Jose Rivera?
Yes.
And Ms. Tina Santin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, our last item on new business. I have a motion for item after the financial report through August 30th and January 4th.
So...
Okay.
Any questions or discussion? See, none, although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Canades, three? Three? Any extensions? Okay, motion passes. Consent agenda, would anyone like to take anything off tonight?
I'd like to remove item P, please.
P?
P. Gotcha.
Anything else? Okay. Can I have a motion for, to approve a grant from the Office for the Childhood and Palliative Program, Enhancing Parent Outreach Ambassador's Effort within the community for $149,500?
Hold on.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unopposed, and abstentions? Mr. Reyes. Okay. And now we can move on to, oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Someone.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent passes? And now we can move to item five, executive session. I'd like a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's contract. This will be with the full board, and we'll possibly call the superintendent.
Pass a statue, it's right there.
We are now out of executive session, and do I have a motion?
Yes, I move that the superintendent's contract, the terms to be negotiated until June 30th of 2027.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you for your support, I appreciate it very much. I'm happy to work here.
Push it to...
Why is that funny?
We haven't gotten to tomorrow night, anything?
I'm happy to work here.
We'll see if you say that after tomorrow night.
Is there any other business tonight? I have one item, I'm really sorry. Can I have a motion to approve delegates for the Cape Conference?
Someone.
We need two delegates, we could also appoint an alternate, so the delegate suddenly happens on Thursday night, I don't know, do you remember the date?
Oh my God, I don't remember the exact date, but Asia already has it.
Night before.
14th, right?
Yeah. So each Board of Education is allowed two delegates, they have to be approved by the Board. We can do this in November, but by December...
The only reason why I had requested it be done now is because I have special needs children and one in palliative care, and I just want to make sure that my daughter's going to be able to.
That's fair.
So that's the only reason.
So we have one interested delegate, is there another?
It's a school night, sorry.
I know.
I'd be happy to delegate.
We have fun, I thought we had...
It was a nice dinner.
Let me have coffee.
You can be happy for anywhere, it's great.
I did give you coffee.
Because you have to share with Tom.
I had three.
So we have...
You can be in a missile firing range and have you a cup of coffee, be happy.
Hang on.
So, yeah, two delegates would be Tina and myself, if we approve the motion.
We'll go for it.
And then if anyone's planning on attending the Cape Conference, please message Asia for the registration, and just copy me.
Already did it.
Perfect, okay.
I will email tomorrow, but I'm in the morning.
Yeah, but it's a great opportunity to support your superintendent's student with C.
You would like to be an alternate, and then Ms. Reyes for an alternate.
What? I brought magazines last time.
And, I guess I said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, now we can adjourn.
Motion to...
Second.